Next on the agenda, information on fracking with Dr. Cheryl Waters-Torme. Cheryl, if you would introduce our next guest.
I'd be happy to. There were some questions from a couple of planning board members about fracking, just what it was. And quite frankly, I had no idea of it and put up a bread and a paper heard in there. But I'm not sure how much of that is true. So I was at, actually at the landslide study presentation that Water presented. It was at Western Carolina University. I asked Dr. Mark Lord and Dr. David Kenner, who were there, if they'd be willing to do a presentation. And they were smart because they recommended Dr. Waters-Torme because she wasn't there, I think. And I contacted her. She was kind enough to say she answered some questions, you know, some information related to the engineering and geology of fracking. And I think there are a lot of questions about it, what it is, even what it is. This isn't meant to get into a lot of the discussion that's been going on, but just to give you an overview of what it is. It's why I hope an opportunity for us all to learn a little bit about just what fracking is. And with that, I'm going to turn off the, first turn this off so maybe it won't distract folks. And then Dr. Waters, Cheryl, with her presentation. Maybe this will turn off.
Did that work for standing here? I don't like having my back to the audience here. So I'm glad to be here. I am a faculty member at Western Carolina's geology department. I've been here for about 10 years. And I want to make it very clear, since this is kind of a political, emotional concern issue, that unlike these two geologists and experts here, I do not do hydro fracking. That's not in any way part of my research. It's not hydrocarbon exploration is not what I do. So if there are specific concerns about or questions about what the state is planning, what the survey is doing, I can sort of answer that based on what I've read in the papers. But because I'm not part of the survey...
Can you use the mic, please? The mic?
I thought I was. Is that better?
Maybe it's not on.
You just have to stand really close. So if y'all wanted the truth about what the survey is doing, what the legislature's asked them to do, I would invite someone from the survey to come and talk to y'all or talk to people in the county. Those are the people who know what started all this conversation about Western Carolina. And the survey can only do what the legislature's asked them to do. They can't do more or less. And so, you know, this really goes back to what the legislature is doing. Okay? So let me just sort of explain that in terms of if anyone wants more information, there are people out there that y'all are paying taxes for that you ask to come and speak to. Okay? So with that said, my expertise is in actually in plate tectonics, what happens at plate tectonic plate boundaries. And in fact, that's the geological history that's led to the idea of these hydrocarbon resources being in North Carolina. So I understand and know about the geological history that's led to that idea. I lead field trips down to the middle part of the state, the basins down there, where in that Sanford area where the really discussion started. And I also have done quite a bit of research on the history of this area, which is why people are talking about the potential for this area as well. So, and also because of my professional activities, some of that's been relevant to the oil and gas industry. And so I've worked with surveys who are doing the same thing, you know, the North Carolina surveys doing. So I do have some professional, you know, experience with this, but just don't do this, you know, for a company. So I can't answer this with specifics. So hopefully that makes sense in terms of the context. I can certainly help y'all or any other group. If you want to have another speaker come, you know, we can help you with that. Then I could need Mark or Dave for that, too. So the one thing, if I can start out perhaps on a different note, I'm not giving a presentation because again, this is not what I do for my research, but I find it kind of ironic that the landslide group is, you know, the topic is here at the same time as this group. Because I was actually part of some of the original discussions about the slope ordinance. And if y'all want to spend energy and time, maybe money, in terms of protecting the land or the land quality or the water quality in Jackson County, slope stability is of way more concerned than hydro. To encourage your legislatures to use your tax dollars, you know, proportionally and appropriately, that is something to consider. So I think it's great that they're here. And this is something that I'm glad everybody is here with. So in my professional opinion, the chances of hydro fracking actually happening in this county are very, 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 very small. Okay? So one of the reasons for that is that the rocks that the gas may come from are very, very old geologically. The material that may have been in those rocks could very well have been, quote unquote, cooked off just by being buried and exposed to heat that's down in the earth. Also, just physically getting to the rocks that may have the gas would be relatively expensive. And although, as everyone knows, oil and gas companies, the bigger ones have lots and lots of money, the idea that they would spend a lot of money to get to these resources if they're even there, as opposed to going, say, you know, Appalachian Basin, which is what's in West Virginia and Pennsylvania or other places in the world, it's just kind of economically doesn't make much sense. Okay? So, and that may turn out to be the case in Sanford area as well. Okay? So a lot of this is about money and economics and what companies will spend their money doing. So hopefully that's kind of a good baseline for everybody to kind of just take a deep breath. I was surprised to hear about the water well insurance as something that's interesting. And I would be happy to come back to that topic because I kind of understand why that's happened. And so it's my understanding that this geological survey has been asked by the state government to go around and take some samples of rocks. There is a, are some maps, they're not very modern maps because the survey hasn't had the money to do modern maps, that suggest that there are some rocks that may have the organic, have had the organic content that could have generated gas when they were buried and cooked and put into this oven. Okay? So it's my understanding that's all that's happening right now. That's the first step. It's the least expensive step in terms of the state spending money to see if it's worth keeping going. And it very well may are in there. Okay? So they're taking samples of what's at the earth's surface. So that's probably going around with the rock hammer, asking permission to get on someone's property and taking a hand sample, sending it off to a lab, having them assess the total organic content, the TOC, and seeing if there's any there. And then there's several other processes that would have to happen to go beyond that. So hydro fracking, that process is at the way other end of the whole series of steps. That would only happen if a company actually bought property or brought the rights to drill and they actually were going to try to produce the gas. Okay? So right now, it's like the very earliest, least expensive, least intrusive, least concerning step. I mean, I go out and take rock samples every day when I'm doing research. Okay? So it doesn't, you know, shouldn't have gotten anyone. It's my understanding again, that the next steps is if those samples somehow suggest that there might be, you know, an expectation of some resources, then the steps would be that the state would probably have to pay to drill to get some core or collect another type of remote sensing data, which is sending sound waves into the ground, bouncing off different rock types, different structures, and seeing if they can image, make an image, kind of like a sonar image of the space that that gas may be in. Okay? So again, I, in my professional opinion, I seriously doubt it's going to go past the rock collection stage, but that, those would be the next steps. That's relatively expensive to drill into bedrock is relatively expensive. Well, expensive to me, maybe not to the state. We're talking, you know, potentially tens of thousands of dollars to collect that, what we call seismic data, you'd have to hire a company. It would take a lot of software processing to get good images, it's tough to do it in a place like this. So that would make it even more expensive. So the state would have to invest quite a bit to collect enough data to even see if they can make the case to a company, hey, come buy this land, you know, do some more work to see if it's worth it. Okay? So in general, the geological survey is about public safety. It's also about economic resources, geological resources. So their job is to kind of investigate that. I work with a group in Australia that did the same thing. And then the state may have to invest something if they want to try to advertise this, convince companies to come. And then at some point, either companies will come or they won't, probably won't here. And then they will take it from there. So the concern is what sort of down, way, way, way down the road, what those companies would do, actually try to extract the gas. And that is at the opposite end of the spectrum that they are here right now. Okay? I think I'll just leave it there. I'd be happy to answer any questions or continue to explain some things to everybody.
A question about the structure of mountains that we have here and the geologic history. It's my understanding that the geologic events that created these mountains and that which created a lot of the rest of North Carolina, South Carolina, the local, what we call the Piedmont or the Low Country, were actually different events geologically. And that, does that go back to your comment that because of the age of these mountains and because of the way that they were formed geologically, that most likely the organic material that it would take to produce the product that the companies are seeking, is that the reason that the low probability that those resources would be here?
Okay. So the question is, you know, what about the geologic history? Is that why I'm saying the low probability? And the short answer to that is yes. North Carolina and Southeast Appalachians in general have about a billion years of geologic history and about four different major tectonic events. So it's pretty complicated. And if y'all would like to hear more about that, you can, I may be come over to the department sometime because that is, you know, what I do for my research, but we don't have time for that right now.
So there really is much difference in, I don't know, like you said a while ago, West Virginia, totally different areas?
No, it's the same mountain chain, just different parts of it. And actually, the reason why Appalachian Basins, that's what's over in Tennessee, West Virginia, Western Pennsylvania, that those resources are a totally different system, totally different history, cause, age, process than what the survey's been asked to look into here in Western North Carolina. So it, because it's a totally different system, totally different sequence of events, totally different thermal history, it's ground zero here. Whereas people have been looking at Appalachian Basin for decades. So the main issue for the resources that probably aren't, but people are wondering if they are here, and when I say here, I mean about a few miles down below us, is that about 700 million years ago, a supercontinent pulled apart, made some valleys that sediment poured into, and there's some evidence that some of that sediment could have had a lot of organic material in it. The problem is, so that's the same type of sediment that, you know, gas is coming out of, that we use every day. The challenge in terms of hydrocarbon resources is that it's been buried underneath our mountains. Okay? So it's been cooked and then burned too much, you know, it's been in the oven way too long. If there were any gases, it's probably leaked off. And so the rocks that would correlate to what they're interested in as a source are exposed in the Smokies. And those are repeated way too much for gas to still be in existence. So we can't draw a line between what we can see in the Smokies and what might be underneath us. That's where the research and the science comes in. But the idea is that, you know, those are what's at the surface, what was at the underneath, this was probably exposed to those same type of temperatures. So it does have to do with the history. It's a much different stage of Appalachian Mountains than really what created the form that's here now. So what's confusing is that the rocks have a different age, sediments being deposited. The rocks that we're talking about here, the ones that we walk around, are much older than that. It's just they've been moved and smushed a little bit. So I don't know if that answers your question.
So give us kind of a layman's geology of what is this we're looking for? So from what you're saying, it's several thousand feet deep. There may or may not be some small layer that's 10 feet deep, 100 feet deep, 500 feet, like horizontally? And they want to go down to get to that, to test, if they were going to extract it, to get to that layer? And then do they want to go horizontally or just do a bunch of hole punches? Like, so how do they, kind of how does it work? And for mountains, is that, it's not a crooked line? So just trying to, and layman's trying to explain what is it they're looking for?
Sure. Well, so these special rocks that had all that organic material in it, the rocks that we are walking around on here, they've been moved inland about 35, 40 miles. And so they've been shoved over the lip of the continent. And there may be slices of the rock that they're looking for, kind of within that stack of a whole bunch of different faults and different rock types. So to, we can't predict that just by looking at the surface. So trying to figure out if it's even there has nothing to do with hydro fracking. So that's where, first you make a geologic map as detailed as possible, then you use that to figure out where you want to shoot the seismic imaging data. And then you would use that to figure out maybe if it's worth the money to drill. And all of that is what we call the exploration stage, where you're just trying to see if there are any resources there at all. So companies could spend years and millions of dollars and then find out it's not worth it and they just move on. Okay? So, but companies have to be convinced that there's a good enough chance to spend that much money. And so that's where the state presumably is trying to play a role, is to collect enough data to see if they can convince companies to do that work. So there are many steps. The horizontal drilling that you're talking about would happen towards the end. And that's when they know exactly where every single lens and layer is, where the gas is coming from. So they have this really detailed map of what's underneath the surface, where it is, how long it is, where it extends. And then they know exactly where to poke the hole in the ground and then to turn it horizontal and drill into that layer. So that's a very, very, very high level of detail and precision. And that takes a lot of money, takes a lot of expertise. So that's why the companies do that. And they're not going to bother to collect that data or even do that geological analysis unless they suspect that there's enough there. So the horizontal drilling is very expensive. Not every company, and we're talking about not just oil and gas companies, but all the service companies that work with them, not every company can do that. Well, it's expensive. So you're not going to do that unless you're really sure that you're going to be able to make a profit.
You're talking about shale, right?
Yes. So this, right. So they're looking for...
With all this granite on top, it seems like it would be more feasible to cut hills or down where you've got more organic material, I guess, than settled.
Well, if you just, if you just want to have it shower closer to the surface, then yeah, you want it to be more into the Western Piedmont. But this is all pure speculation. We have no idea. And when we say shale, it's not shale anymore, it's slate, it's, you know, what we call phylate. They're pretty high temperature, non-organic rocks. And by the time a shale gets to that temperature, it's burned, you know, the hydrocarbons on it's left. So, so yeah, you know, if the survey, you know, continues to collect data and they think, hmm, actually there may be more than we thought, you know, and they continue to work on the state geology and if they figure out that there may be some of these pockets preserved kind of underneath the stack of these mountains and farther east, then, you know, that they would, that's just really geological research at this point, purely speculative, yeah.
So is there enough in North Dakota to keep them out of these mountains?
If I were a company and I wanted to go and try to explore to find the area that they're before, this would be the last place I would come. I mean, maybe not last, maybe there's some places that just, you know, once everything's stopped. But, you know, it's, it's a pretty, in my personal opinion, and there may be secret proprietary data out there I don't know anything about, but I doubt it. Yeah. So, but you got to realize from, if we put the most positive light on all the politics around this, you know, it's the state's job to try to utilize the resources of the state, human and otherwise, for the benefit of its residents. And so in theory, as we see, I'm trying to imply that, you know, so, you know, so that could be tourism, it could be, you know, mineral resources, it could be hydrocarbon resources. And so, you know, at the most optimistic level, they're just making sure there's no, you know, stone unturned. And so this would be a stone that a lot of geologists would just walk past and not bother and try to turn over. But, you know, when you have people making decisions and they've got a lot of different pieces they're trying to balance, you know, it's not just based on geology.
And the, and the geology of the rest of the states outside of Jackson County and the immediate mountains, what do you, what do you rate the odds of finding gas at Piedmont?
Well, in the basins around Durham and Sanford, they know that there is gas. I mean, they've been getting coal, so coal, gas, petroleum, those are all hydrocarbon based. They've been getting coal and gas out of those basins for 100 years. So they know that it's there. What has rejuvenated interest in these basins is the technology of fracking and horizontal drilling. And then also the fact that we continue to pay whatever price is, you know, posted for oil and gas. So, you know, we're driving this market. And as the price goes up, some of these places, reservoirs become more economically viable, right? If the price goes up, you can spend more money getting out. So those places that they're known, it's just that they're tiny compared to the Appalachian Basin. So that's why no one's done much yet. But the idea is that in theory, there could be just the right size company that would see this reservoir in the middle part of the state that would be worth it based on their resources.
With horizontal drilling, how does that, a lot of the concerns I've heard are about property rights and dealing with the land rights below your property. Can you speak to that?
I don't know enough about North Carolina to speak to that. In some states, your neighbor can drill under you, mine under you, if you can't do anything about it. In other states, it's not that case. And that's actually what I think probably from a legal standpoint is probably the most critical point. Because if you have, say you have an area, not here, but you have an area where you do think there's enough gas resources, you know, right now, different people own that property. So do you have to convince all of them to sell it to one company? You know, can one company buy one property and do all the horizontal drilling in there? I don't know what the laws are. And I expect that that's part of what the government is looking at as well. So horizontal drilling, the advantage of it is that you can do one vertical drill and you can go out like spokes in a wheel in all different directions. So it's a little bit simpler because of that. Whether or not you have, you can, how far you can go and in what direction depends on the property rights really, what you're going in the property.
I have another question. As far as the technology of fracking, why don't they use just straight water? Why are there chemicals in it? And as a second question, your opinion on why the disclosure of those chemicals has been made illegal?
Okay. So the first question was why are there chemicals? Why, because it says hydro fracking, but all that means is it's a liquid, it's not just water. To be honest, the blank answer to your question is just it works better. They've figured out ways that it'll work better. So for the same amount of time, money, fluid, they'll get more gas out. One of the problems with hydro fracking is that each company has been in competition to sort of learn how to do it the best. Because whoever does it the best and most efficiently can make the most money the quickest. But all this research and development that they do is proprietary, right? So they pay for it. They, the people that they have employed develop these techniques. So they own, it's like, you know, they own an environmental impact, groundwater impact. It just, I mean, just generally speaking, there may be some companies who did that. But the, they don't know which chemicals would still work better and not be a problem in terms of groundwater quality. So, and then your second question was, why don't they have to share that?
Yeah, but I mean, the law that makes disclosing the chemicals illegal, I've heard a lot about that.
Well, yeah, I mean, my, any company that has technology, they don't want to share it because that's what's helping them make their money. So a state, I'm assuming in our country, would have to make a decision, well, y'all can come in, do exploration and production, but you have to really, you know, release all the contents of your fluid, you know? Or they could say, no, you can go ahead, you don't have to release it. And so a company who's trying to keep their economic benefit wouldn't want to share because another company can use it as well. So whether or not a state makes that, it's more like it's illegal to not really reveal it, I would assume. And so again, that's just political, sorry, that's my, it's going to alarm out. What does that sound like? So, so that would be something that legislature could do. You know, it's not, it doesn't necessarily have to be just in general about hydro fracking. It doesn't have to be all or nothing. But it would be obviously better to know what's in it because then you can do things like monitor groundwater wells to see if it's coming back out. You can pay scientists to do research about what those chemicals, how they might interact with different materials in the subsurface. You know, but that research hasn't been done. And if you don't know what they're putting in, you can't, you know, tell necessarily what's coming out and what's not. So, and that's the core issue, is that, I mean, that we're running a scientific experiment constantly with hydro fracking. And we're collecting data and we'll see what happens and what doesn't happen. And that's what's kind of scary about letting it happen, is that you're experimenting with your groundwater and your property.
You said you were going to revisit the well insurance question?
Yeah. So it's my understanding from what this young lady shared with us, that her well insurance has been canceled.
Well, the entire state's not renewing.
Right. So I don't even know what well insurance is. I get the kind of the concept. One of the challenges is that whenever a groundwater well is going into saprolite, which is the really weathered bedrock or bedrock itself, so the water's flowing through to fractures, we actually, as geologists and hydrologists, don't know that much about fracture flow. So in other words, to get groundwater out. If anyone drills a groundwater well into rock, they have no idea really what's going to happen. And that's, you know, that's something that's an active area of research. And if I go faculty at Western, you're kind of looking into that. That's also the problem with slope stability. So the idea is if you have a well that's behaving a certain way now, if you create other fracture networks, there's no way to predict whether it will pump out more water or less water. So, I mean, these, they're, they're creating sets of fractures and they don't know really what orientation they are, how far they're all extending. It's a very imprecise method. It's a very imprecise method. I was at a meeting, the International Meeting for Drilling Geologists in April, and I went to a short course and basically they're like, yeah, we don't really know exactly how it's going to work. Sometimes it does, sometimes it doesn't. You know, so they're in the process of doing this research themselves. So the idea that a company would promise to fix or drill a new well, I mean, I don't know if that's what the insurance does, but in theory, that's what it would cover.
Did cover costs.
Then, why would they do that when there's this basically potential unknown that could cause a whole, you know, valleys worth of water wells to suddenly go dry?
If I'm saying correctly, Dr. Kenner?
Yeah.
Dr. Kenner gave us a briefing on groundwater.
Right.
And the whole poking hope situation.
Yes, exactly.
And that's basically what he said, because I think it was Joe that had, did you Joe had a spring go dry?
Yeah.
He had a spring that had been running for generations that went dry. And the question was, you know, why, why would that happen or even to a well, not against a spring? And Dr. Kenner was telling us basically that. You know, when you drill a well over here and you create a new crack, or you do hydro fracking, you know, where they actually send a charge down the well casing to create new cracks, because well A is not getting any water. That crack could then take water away from well B or well C or whatever.
Right.
And the bottom line is, you don't know.
That's right.
What's going on?
I mean, y'all can do hydro fracking with your personal wells, you know? If you drilled a well down into rock and it wasn't giving you the flow that you needed for your property, if you had lots of money, you could hire someone come in and hydro frack your well and increase potentially the water flow. You know, so it's not just only gas, it's anything that can flow through pore space. So, because it's like, I mean, this is just the state of the science, you know? These fracture networks are so poorly understood, it's that, you know, we don't know when they would open, when they would close, when they might go dry, you know, what type of recharge rate. Whereas when it's an aquifer, meaning a known volume of rock or sediment that contains the water, it's a much more understandable system. You kind of know the top and the bottom and the, you know, east extent and the west extent. You know the rocks and the velocity and you kind of figure out what's happening. But with what we call crystalline rocks around here, being cementomorphic rocks, it's kind of a shot in the dark. So it doesn't matter if you're trying to get out gas or oil or water, it's kind of the same thing. I don't know if that, yeah. So some of the questions about slope stability, groundwater resources, new developments, hydro fracking impact, the geology behind that is very similar. So, you know, that's what researchers are trying to answer at a lot of places throughout the country.
I have a list of questions that I promised I would ask from some friends and acquaintances. Are the suggestions that fracking causes environmental damage, including earthquakes and polluted water found in solid sands?
I will, I'll do the earthquakes first. The question is, you know, does hydro fracking really cause earthquakes and then just environmental concerns? So there are some cases where the United States Geological Survey or state surveys have documented earthquakes resulting from basically pumping gas or fluid under pressure out of the rocks and the rocks kind of collapse because the pore space is not being held open anymore effectively. So those types of earthquakes, geologists can tell if it's that type of earthquake as opposed to a fault moving. So there's, we have the technology to do that. And so some of them have been confirmed. However, it's my understanding that that's happened in areas where the gas or oil reservoir is huge, okay? And so when you're really trying to empty out that reservoir, it's a large area as opposed to a smaller area. So the predictability of whether hydro fracking related earthquakes would happen in one place versus the other, then we don't have enough data to predict that. So even though it has happened in other areas, to say whether it happened in Sanford or Durham or here, it would be very hard to predict that.
I don't like the singles.
Well, yeah, actually we could do better with singles.
Well, what about the chemicals in the water?
So with the environmental concerns, those are absolutely founded in science. They're, I mean, chemicals they get put in aren't natural chemicals in groundwater, you can tell that they've come out, just like with any other pollution, there's documented cancer related rates and things like that. So that's for sure. But the uncertainty is which chemicals are causing that, because for a long time in these areas, companies didn't have to report and they probably changed the chemicals over time as they developed, you know, better techniques. The causes of problems, like radon, for example, is a naturally occurring gas, was from some rocks, that's a natural hazard. So some of these chemicals could flow through some of these rocks and be part of the problem. It's not just the chemicals, it's, you know, duration, combination of different chemicals, how long you're exposed, whether you drink the water or you just, you know, bathe in it, like there's just so many variables. And this is an experiment kind of going on as we speak, and there just isn't enough data to answer, this will be a problem, this won't be a problem. And that's what's kind of scary because it's just real...
Where does the chemical fracking water go? Where does the wastewater go?
No wells.
Sorry. All right, yeah, that's the next step. Totally forgot what you asked me.
Yeah, I, the wastewater that's a byproduct of the process?
Yeah. So there's what we call flowback wastewater, so that's water that there's not room to store underground, so it can flow back out through the well system. Some of the water doesn't come back out. Some of the chemicals do, some of the chemicals don't. That's not something, again, companies are collecting their own data every day about what's happening when, and each company, because each company has their own little recipe, would have different results. So, it's my understanding, I don't think there's any way that a company can say, we know how much is going to stay in and we know how much is going to come out. Just rocks are too complicated for that kind of question to be answered. So, they can certainly do a prediction and have some sort of estimate of uncertainty, but they wouldn't be able to know it for sure. And one of the questions, kind of going back to the groundwater well going dry, the water pathways, you know, a lot of water soaks into the ground and that's where it comes from, but some groundwater travels great distances, for tens of miles. And so we also, because we don't know what those flow paths are underground through these different rock systems, we actually don't know how far the footprint, so as you're looking down on the map, how far the footprint would be to some of those fluids passing through. So we'll know after it's done, but we won't know before.
So if your neighbor allowed fracking on their property and your well ended up poisoned, I mean, a lot of these questions are sort of law, legal, legislative based, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but those are the types of concerns folks have. So what you're saying is that we don't really know, we aren't currently regulating that type of thing.
So the question was like, you know, if the property next to you allows fracking, how could you, you know, what's your, are your resources or recourse? Again, that is, you know, would be law based. It's my understanding that it would be a monitoring situation, so the idea would be that you would just watch your water and if it turns out it gets polluted, then you need to have a plan B. Well, I'm pretty sure, so the question is, would the company be liable or the state be liable and things? I can't imagine a company investing and trying to develop a reservoir if they want protective and that kind of thing.
Cheryl had sent us documentation on the state and they were talking about within a half a mile of something where the fracking was, that if damage came to the owner's wells and stuff, they had to go back and fix everything and get it back to...
Yeah, so the idea of, you know, how much the company is responsible, how much they're not responsible, that would be negotiated between, you know, the legislatures and some industry representative. And, I mean, to be honest, in my professional opinion, they may say that they can fix it, but they don't know how to. I mean, that's not, that's not what they're spending money on. So, I mean, once, you know, a river is seriously depleted, you know, polluted, once a lake is, once groundwater is, it's just, it's really hard to mitigate that or to fix it. So, you know, conceptually, you know, I'm sure we do have the technology to do that, sort of, but the cost, I just can't imagine a company actually, you know, doing that. So, but again, that's not geology, that's not chemistry, that's politics.
I'm sure you're not going to be able to answer everybody's question here tonight. And thank you for not asking the questions of our guests. Can you suggest a, where audience members might go to find out more of the questions that weren't answered tonight?
Well, I mean, I think your most direct questions would be what the plan is in terms of what's been done in western North Carolina. And the people to ask would be the state geological survey, because they've been given the job. And then, you know, your local representatives, what the plan is. And that would be a really important conversation to have. If, you know, the details about fracking and how safe it is or not and what chemicals are being used and stuff like that's just so far down the road that it would all be hypothetical anyway. So, I mean, you could have someone, I'm sure, come in who has been doing this research, probably an engineer, and they could talk more specifically about what the risks are, what we know, what we don't know. And that would probably be really informative and interesting, but I don't, that's not really where y'all are at this point. So it's really about the laws, number one. And the, really the state of the investigation at this point. So, so that's my suggestion, would be to ask, you know, someone from the survey to come in and speak with you guys. They could talk for a while about the geologic history, I'm sure. That's really where I would go, because they're the ones who are doing it. The state right now are the ones who are investing the time and the money to ask these questions to see if they can attract industry. So those are the people to get to.
Are they surveyed in public?
The geological survey? They are authorized, I guess, to map the whole state or, you know, do that sort of work. They still have to ask permission, you know, there's still some things to negotiate about different properties. Like I don't know how it affects the national park and what the, you know, the laws are about that. I don't know if the property owner could say, no, you can't come sample the rocks on the property. I actually don't know anything else.
The dog's house.
Well, that happens. Do you want to add something?
I'd like to add something, just having worked with the geological survey and having go on people's property or ask for permission to get into people's property, these folks are not the ones that are going to be the ones fracking. They are the scientists who are just trying to find out what kind of rocks we have in this area, kind of like we're trying to find out what kind of life like we have in this area. So if you do have anger about this whole thing, please don't take it out on the geologist.
Yeah. I don't give that impression at all. The survey, they're just scientists and they're only asked, they're only allowed to do what the legislature, you know, tasks them to do. So, and they're not allowed to not do it, otherwise they have to quit. So the survey is not, you know, they have information, but they're not making the decisions, they're not planning anything, they're just the people out there collecting data. How that data is used, how it's interpreted is really not up to them at all.
Yeah, I'm just curious, in what you do, how many years ago was it that you heard that fracking was an energy cap? How many years?
Well, for as long as there have been wells being drilled to, it's been used, it's just...
Right, so I mean, the energy business kind of...
Oh, it's been used ever since, you know, there's been the technology to put a fluid under pressure underground. It's just that when you have a well, so as long as petroleum's been used for, you know, transportation, hydro fracking has been used, but it's been used in a very limited sense in a vertical well. What we're talking about is hydro fracking combined with horizontal drilling in a certain way. And also collecting the data is a technology advance. So hydro fracking has been a tool, it's been used for decades, but how it's being done and the extent to which it's been done is what's changed.
Thank you. Any more questions from the board? Thank you. We really appreciate your comment.
Can I just say one more thing?
Sure.
Now I'm worried. Sir. That any state geological survey, their job is to do whatever the legislature tells them to do, they can't not do it, and they can't do anything different than that. And if funding gets cut, they can't do it anymore, and if funding's awkward, they have to do it or they have to quit their jobs. So the geological survey is in no way responsible for any of this. And probably if you could get them into a corner where they knew their words wouldn't be reported, they were probably, they might be saying some of the same things I don't want to be saying, but, you know, that's not their job. So they can provide some of the information specifically about what they've been asked to do, and they can do it, you know, in an accurate way as a geologist. But if you're concerned about where that's going and how it's going to be used, then it's the, you know, the legislature or your local representatives who are deciding that. So, you know, you can ask a geologist not to go on your property, but that doesn't mean that, you know, that it's going to stop the process, for saying. Please, don't hate the geologist. Okay, thank you.